Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 24th, 2017 regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education, calling this meeting to order. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 10th, 2017 regular meeting?
So move.
Second. Any discussion, corrections?
Just wanted to check, was this the motion that you had me do?
Yes.
Oh, yes, so that should be corrected.
So, 6.14 was actually a motion by me, Savalainen, and it was seconded by Chauvin.
Thank you.
And then there was one other little...
What note, what item was that?
6.14.
Yeah, okay.
And there was a...
Yeah, that's important note.
I lost, I thought I had a typo circled.
6.14.
I don't see it, so...
6.14.
6.14. Oh, 6.14, I thought 6.1.
Motion by Savalainen.
Oh, yeah, sorry, 6.14.
Okay, I'd do the same thing.
6.14.
Yeah, everybody did.
Okay. Any other corrections, amendments, changes? Okay, all those in favor of the minutes is amended. Okay. That motion passes. We have time for public comment. Seeing as we have no public, we will continue to report some discussion with our principals' reports.
Good evening, everyone.
Sure.
We don't want to make you...
Try the other thing on the stem of it.
There you go.
Yeah, there you go.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So, a couple of things, wanted to let you know, I recorded out on last night, so I'm going to spend two more times, let you know that we're wrapping up our special Harry Potter Character Ed unit with our Quidditch World Cup, so that there's a collaborative unit happening here and over at my school. If you haven't had a chance, it's quite a... John and I were just talking about the fact that you can actually, we actually have like a reel of all those and everything they have this year over us, by us taking a look at it. It's as close as you can get without flying around in the room. Take a look at our link on our website, we have, you know, the runners across the top, will give you an idea of clicking on it, get a look at the scores and how to do these things. So just wanted to remind you of that. I reported last time that we were going to have our Math Night out on October 12th, so we did at 6:30, and I was joined by AAS Math Dream Chancellor, Kerry Martin, and Marco Rizzolo. We had about nine families join us, so certainly want more, but those nine families really sat engaged with us for quite a while, actually, over an hour. So we went a little bit longer, but it was a great conversation, I wanted to just debrief. We spent the first part of the evening discussing math anxiety, what it is, you know, how we can help as parents, educators, kind of going over some of the, you know, the little things we don't realize we do. A good example, you know, your child's struggling with the math concept, whatever, you sit down, you're like, "Oh, I can probably see that math." And just those little things that we don't think about, kind of, you know, build that up a little bit. So, we talked about that, we also reviewed the Everyday Math Portal for parents, so that they can take a look at some of the offerings. So, scoping sequence of our current program, as well as some math games, we had to cut short some of the math games, we had them set up, the conversation was really, really good, and the families that did show, really had a lot of great questions about how they can help their child move forward, what our policies are, like how long they should be pushing certain concepts before they have to communicate back to us. And the good thing is, everyone left with our emails of three hours, in the event that they had any questions, things that they wanted us to help, if they were having a problem with a specific, you know, math concept of their child, we could guide them in the right direction now or early. So, we definitely would like to try to do it again. We have, came away with a few next steps, I processed with Kerry and Laura shortly after, maybe a little more description of some of the topics we're going to address that night, find a couple of other ways to kind of advertise, but those regards, and I think it's a good conversation, a well worth it, we're trying to keep that going. I'll let John give you a little more detail, but we did have our Madagascar Day on October 20th, Malagasy dance program, the second and eighth graders also visit our kindergarten students with some of those stories, so John, you can more info about that. One of the things I'm proud of in the new initiative this year, I don't think I mentioned it, we're working with Anderson Center, with teachers from third through fifth grade this year, on something called Building Foundations for Effective Behavioral Practice. We're trying to kind of find a lot of opportunities to work with my staff, K through five, to kind of guide them through really becoming like, creating useful, effective management programs in the classroom, whether it be individuals who are in the whole class. So, we had a core group of three through five teachers that we kind of invited, I wanted to thank Emily Davidson for helping me put it together. Basically, it works as, we have four two-hour training sessions throughout the year, we just had our first one a week ago. Anderson comes back about a month later for a full day, and visits all the classrooms to see kind of in action, we're working to have a sub with the Anderson person to be in the classroom with them, so that if that person and the teacher have to debrief, they can actually do it right there, rather than if they need to meet afterwards and take their time out of the classroom. So, basically, we do that four separate times throughout the year for the next, we have all those days set up, and it's basically built capacity about quite a few things, understanding the functions of behavior reinforcement and behavior reduction, certainly evidence-based antecedent interventions, as well as evidence-based consequent interventions, and then data collection methods that kind of will lead into creating a process for that classroom. So, I'll kind of give you feedback as the year goes on. The hope is that Emily and I, we hope that if it was successful, we might do a K-2 cohort next year, there was some talk about even like the specialist team as a group kind of being part of that, so. And by the way, Anderson, the same group of people, are also delivering a series of workshops on next month, it's Friday, April 37th, so it's the same group of people that are working, and the whole staff, but will be more concentrated and laser focused with those six staff members. We have classroom teachers, teaching assistants as well, our new teaching assistant and classroom teacher for herself, Amy, is actually part of that group, so we thought it was just a great initiative, we'll keep giving updates as the year goes on. As always, we had our Grade Three Safety Day last week, we brought the smokehouse in, fire safety, American Heart Association, RSRO, did training, education, so we do that every year for third grade, we would have got that a little bit earlier this year. I wanted to thank certainly the RSF, Mr. Etson, Mr. Yarnell. Last week, we had a wonderful trip to Camp Gravelho, it was primarily funded through the RSF, who's something we kind of worked on early in the summer, Jen Huntley kind of talked to us about it at first, and then we really worked with the camp to kind of get a human engineering project together, these great students are the working groups, each of them build a version of, like we've gone a couple of lot of, you know, more cleverly to solve a lot of problems, create, utilize a lot of the natural materials and environments to do so. So, I heard a lot about the taco bar, but once we heard about the taco bar, we heard a lot more great things about what was going on. They came out, came off those buses, shot out a cannon. And then we're actually going to be debriefing with Noel and myself, Mr. Yarnell, Mr. Etson, probably Monday or Tuesday about the program, to see if we can keep something like that going on on an annual basis. Also, I wanted to mention, if you drive past Chancellor, you may notice a TP on the property. It's been a couple of years since we've had it, that's actually with flying colors, in our program, they started about a week or two ago, they've been working in my building for quite a few years, I'm talking about five, five years or so. What they do is they focus on cultural, like not only the art, but the language, the music, or things like that, of different cultures, so they work for Spain, they've done France, we've done Native American culture, and we're kind of back at that. So, what you see there is not only an opportunity for the students, they started the painting actually came from the students that were on, so it was put up kind of there, as the students learn about some of the symbols of Native American art, and then a lot of the, we have permitted, a lot of the programming actually happens in the... So, we're happy to have them, they're a great group that works almost the entire year, it's in full sessions, and a lot of students benefit from it. Also, I wanted to mention, STEM enrichment, one of the reasons we started that one, you may remember, it was one of the first, it was like a single item on memo for me about approving that enrichment. We did that early, one of the reasons, I can give you an explanation, but one of the reasons we did that early was we wanted to have the prosthetic that that group was going to work on to present at the Discovery Festival this weekend, so that was one of the reasons why we started that one early. Well, again, people are moving to the other areas, opportunities we have in my building, teachers really get very jazzed up, come up with some great ideas, and we're going to get some of that stuff started earlier this year as well. David also put that out for my families, out of the past couple of weeks, like families, know that, hey, if your kids have a STEM program and just still want to participate, or have something that they want to show at the Discovery Festival, reach out to them. So, I haven't had a chance to catch up, because I'm actually at a conference right now, so I haven't had a chance to catch up, kind of, feedback he's got, hopefully we'll get that for by the end of the week. Also, I wanted to mention, Impact Education with Lisa DiMarzo, we were lucky enough, once again, and I want to thank David Wolfman for securing grants for that, it's through Department Northwest Chester Close, Environmental Education Services, if you, we have kind of actually expand this program every year, so if you remember, it's all about really outstanding, hands-on, curriculum-related projects around science and the environment for our students, K through five, so everything from the Five Senses, Hudson River Habitat, the Web of Life, water cycle, pond study, the Star Lab, and Creatures Alive, beginning November, has run this really through the whole year, almost at least once along with these community rooms, which was a great, showing that they've been putting all those grants together, and have a good relationship with that company, so we'll be out pretty soon. A few upcoming events, as I mentioned last time, we'll have illustrator Brian Collier, he's coming on November 7th to work with grades three, four, and five in the library, he specializes in watercolors and collage, spends a lot of time visiting schools and libraries to discuss the process for the artwork, and then how he gets his books out on the shelves. In November, Henry Frischmann will be speaking with my grade five students about the Sandler Witch Trial, so we'll have an opportunity to have that conversation with him. Title One AAS Open House, this is Wednesday, the 25th, we're also, for the second year in a row, in the second year in a row, including Emily Davidson for an hour before that, to work with BNL parents to meet the Dallas Ross, so it's kind of a double of the house. And then our grade five CPR EBE training that we do every year with the Duchess Paramedics is on November 20th.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Great start.
Fantastic. Thank you for that wonderful news.
Good evening, everyone. October is National Bullying Prevention Awareness Month, and to kick off this month, we participated, BNS students participated in an activity called Go Blue, there are a number of classroom activities that go along with that, but basically, there's an organization called Stomp Out Bullying, it's a national organization focused on reducing and preventing bullying, raising awareness and educating students about bullying in school and online. In addition to that, many members of our student support staff gave classroom presentations to all three grade levels, sixth through eighth, the Dignity for All Students Act, and again, about bullying harassment. So, we've had some themed activities that have done on elsewhere in other curricular areas, ELA, social studies, and here and there, we're kind of fitting it in as we can throughout the month of October, but as we, as we talk about social and emotional moments of our students, we have plans of the works to make this a theme throughout the school year this year. Last week, Berkeley Middle School, sixth grade chorus and general music students had the pleasure and privilege of viewing a presentation by Dr. Christiana Fortune Reader and Dr. Alex Pei from SUNY New Poles. They came in, students learned about Beethoven and music, comparing Beethoven with other 18th century composers such as Mozart and Haydn, and working with Dr. Pei, students learned to sing chords as he played part of Beethoven's piano, which are number five. This week and last, sixth and seventh grade art classes, and this is educators at Claremont Historic Site, they're carving a hundred jack and lanterns for use during their Legends by Candlelight Ghost Course, and while this is a fun activity in and of itself, this is a partnership that we've been fostering over the course of the last year, and you'll recall that we partnered with Claremont last year, we were fortunate enough to get a grant that allowed a number of our seventh grade students to work with their education director, who's also a professional comic artist, they did a research project, they were taking it step by step through the process of creating historical comic book pages, and followed that by publishing that comic book, which was that I displayed at Claremont. As a, like I said, the fact that carving pumpkins is a fun activity in and of itself, Claremont was so thankful for us for doing this, that they have offered to run an historic comic club this year, free of charge. They're encouraging us to expand it, to offer it to all three grade levels, to bring in more students, and they were offering it to free of charge, so we're very pleased about that. As Brett said, Madagascar Day was this past Friday, again, it was a fantastic day, I had the good fortune of being able to try to get around and see as much as I possibly can, and as action-packed as that day is, there's no way to get around and see all the great activities that are going on. This is the third year that we've had a Madagascar Day series of activities, and again, when we designed this three years ago, the idea was to cycle students through sixth, seventh, eighth grade with a different theme per grade level. Sixth grade was all about education, we bring all the students into the oratory, and they view Madagascar Islands of lemurs. This year, and I think probably the greatest addition to the program in years past, and we had a number of Dr. Patricia Wright's graduate students here on campus, working with our students and working with our high school students as well, but the greatest addition to the program this year was having all of the students that went to Madagascar this past summer, through the Culture Connect program with Ginger Burns, with Henry Frischmann, served in some capacity. We had two high school students that gave keynote presentation, put together a PowerPoint presentation and a slideshow, and had a wonderful question and answer session with all of our sixth graders, following the movie. In addition to that, our sixth grade students, thanks to Grant from the Chronic Science Foundation, we had the Two by Two Zoo back in here again this year, and students got to see live lemurs, they got to see gassy cottroaches, certainly I highlighted the date for the sixth grade students. We had a local chef who prepared traditional Malagasy food, and he gave a sampling to all of the sixth grade students as well, and in addition, they learned about customs and holidays and presents and mini books in their ELA class. Seventh grade was all about creation, and we bring Zara Hina in here, I know I spoke about that group before, again, what a wonderful organization, all Broadway actors came up in New York City, spent the entire morning with our students, and many of them stayed for Culture Connect's activity in the afternoon as well, they developed, produced, and performed a video representation of a Malagasy folk tale. This year's, this year's seventh grade testing is probably, are probably the best group that we've had yet. In addition to that, they learned the art of Malagasy paper making, they developed, produced, and performed Malagasy and American folk tales, and went over to Chancellor and performed for kindergarten students. In eighth grade, that was all about community outreach, once again, we had groups of students that were all over town, several students were putting together a scavenger hunt in local towns, we've got lemurs hanging in trees and in shops, we had a bunch of students working with three in three different area preschools, teaching Malagasy games, teaching about folk tales, reading books, doing Malagasy crafts, then we had a group of students that worked Baptist home, teaching or basket beating to the residents there, as well as playing mukala, and then finally, as Brett mentioned, we had a group of students that went over to Chancellor, learned Malagasy dance, thanks to the Vanover Caravan, and then taught the second graders Malagasy dance. Again, just wonderful, neat activities that went on that day, many thanks to, you know, Arts in Education, Rhinebeck Science Foundation, Dr. Wright, Zara Hina, Culture Connect, and to the Education Network for Teachers and Artists, the Vanover Caravan, and Rhinebeck Chamber of Commerce, and certainly many kudos to Henry Frischmann, who coordinates a lot of hardworking people to just together here. Next students, the next Monday, our eighth grade students are going to visit the FDR Library Museum, they're going to participate in the Presidential Decision Making Workshop using primary resources and critical thinking skills to assume the role of the president in the presidential cabinet. Look forward to seeing that activity. In addition, they will tour the images of internment exhibit, this is timely, because they are working their way through a unit on the refugee experience in their ELA classes, and finally, they will tour the FDR home and town, and that's thanks to a community foundation grant. As Brett mentioned, our Title One and BNL parent meetings will be held tomorrow night. Next week, the circus comes to town for its 25th year, kind of hard to believe, and hard to believe that I've now been here for more than half of them. Once again, thanks to the PT SO, sixth grade students will be working with performers from the National Circus Project, and again, come one, come all, next Friday night, November 3rd, 6:30 PM, we'll open the BNS gym for our performance. Our eighth grade parent information meeting, again, thank you to Dr. Davenport, and especially thank you to his guidance department, an eighth grade parent meeting will be held again this year on November 8th at 7:00 PM. Veterans Day Assembly, another annual event for BNS, will be held Thursday, November 9th. Breakfast will be at 8:30, and our assembly will begin at 9:30, thanks to our connection on the board from Guard College. Our speaker this year will be Major Malia Dumont, in the US Army Reserve, she was enlisted in 1999 through 2003, was commissioned from 2003 to present, and currently, she's also Chief of Staff at Guard College, so thank you for that connection and for a very timely breakfast with the board conversation that took place. And finally, sponsored by the Rhinebeck High School Drama Club, plans are underway for the annual BNS RHS talent show that will be held on November 6th, so a number of things going on.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Thank you so much.
Good evening, as usual, I'd like to begin by updating you on some decisions, actions taken by the high school building level planning team. The building level planning team has finalized the second year of our pilot of the Day of Service in conjunction with partnership with the village, our Day of Service will take place November 4th, and students will be able to participate either in tree planting that's sponsored by the village, or on helping put our memory garden to bed, which shows those who are gardeners, who stand in the practice building and like the process, or sort of in form. The building level planning team has identified a speaker to talk with our students about diversity, Dr. Michael Fallon is a psychology psychologist and actor, and at this point, his schedule allows for January visit, so the team is working on securing funds to support this visit, and perhaps partnering with the Parkland Central School District, so we can speak here and then speak over the parklands and hopefully reduce costs. As many of you recall, the building level planning team has, for a number of years, searched for ways of inviting recent graduates back to school, to involve them, see how they're doing, and also see what sorts of insights they can provide to us on effectively survive school. So, in the past, we've tried welcoming back breakfasts between semesters, while a lot of our students are home on lunch break, we've tried welcoming back barbecues, depending on the school year, the timing, the weather, we can work with them, and although we had a number of students return, we didn't have an overwhelming shortage. So, the BLPT would like to continue in Spain, and is working on scheduling a recent graduates roundtable, and that will take the form of recent graduates who are in college, military, in the world of war, coming back to visit us in probably mid-May, late May, and to participate in a moderated panel discussion with interested parents and students, also have the seniors. So, we're at work, planning logistics to conduct this sort of event, again, with the hope of gaining some insight in terms of how well high school prepares students for life back from high school, and also providing some insights to parents and students. So, I look forward to getting you, as we finalize what's going to happen. As of today, excuse my last report, we've had admissions representatives from 20 colleges speak with our students, both in college and careers too, and in the guidance office, we're looking for appointments, that brings us almost to 60 colleges and universities who have visited our students since the start of this year. In academic updates, in the English department, students in English 12 are working on writing instructional manuals for 19 acres, which they're going to share later. As you know, writers need to envision an audience, using their purpose, and there's a few better exercises than writing instructions and directions to make sure that you're writing clearly and logically, and with sense. In the social studies department, if you guys go October 19th, Pulitzer Prize winning historian, Dr. David Kennedy, gave a public lecture on FDR. Before his lecture, he invited a lot of the social studies teachers to meet with him to have a conversation about teaching American history. Our social studies teacher, John Tejeno, attended the Duchess Academy Social Studies teachers, he reports that the conversation is stimulating, and Dr. Kennedy shared some engaging teaching materials on FDR, college, and county. In the math department, computer science principles, students contributed their first project, programming project, using Scratch, and as you probably already know, as I learned, Scratch is a computer programming language, an introductory language, and it's used at initial stages because it's relatively easy to use, and the skills that are learned in using Scratch can be applied to more advanced programming languages like Python and Java. So, the students presented games that they created using this programming language to their peers, Mr. Vanvoelde invited Mr. Perch in need to watch the presentations, some of the games involved landing spacecraft on the moon, and the student input data that mimicked the craft they were ready, the rate of gravity of the moon, change the gravity to simulate planets, other students constructing mazes, the beginnings of wall playing games, or computer-based games. So, it was a very interesting presentation, and the students were certainly very engaged in what was created, and what they've shared with their peers. In the science department, in our anatomy and physiology class, we spoke with an invited mainly baseball scout for the Arizona Diamondbacks, that is shein, to speak with our students about the psychological aspects of sports performance and injury recovery. I want to echo what Mr. Henderson mentioned, we had two professors from SUNY New Poles who spoke with additions of BNS students, high school band students, and recent theater students about baby children. In physical education, our teachers are wrapping up their golf unit with authentic assessment, which students play a round of birdie ball golf, homemade golf course that now assists the baseball field. So, just in time, before we install, which means that that activity... In the guidance department, we have one more parent presentation for juniors, and we're the first parents of juniors. In addition, the department is investigating the possibility of using program called Naviance to assist the guidance department in supporting students as they plan for college and careers. And very briefly, it's been several years since I had orientation on the Naviance as digital repository for school records, decorations, it's got learning inventories, personality inventories, career-based inventories, and it assists guidance council students and parents to provide the best parents that are considered for careers, directions activities. With the corporate realm, we conducted an activity fair for all students on November 6th. The Drama Club has been doing fall workshops in anticipation of their Black Box performance on November 29th. The first week of October was Ally Week, the gay screen Alliance sponsored Ally Week this year, and during this week, students can obtain skippers and pins to show their support for the LGBTQ community. In addition, students were able to sign a pledge in their English classrooms condemning anti-LGBTQ language learners and immigrants. We conducted our student council class officer elections on October 13th. And I do also want to take a moment to recognize the hard work of our athletic director, and the flexibility of operation of middle school teachers, high school teachers... the flexibility operation of middle school teachers, high school teachers, and our social support staff, which enabled us to successfully post two sectional soccer contests on Monday. We had, in the past, we posted sectional soccer contests at 2:00 PM, which never really gave me too many more gray hairs than I already had. And Mr. Boucher mentioned that we would be hosting at 11 o'clock. My blood pressure spiked a little bit because that, I thought, could represent a significant disruption to the school day. But I'm happy and not surprised to report that it was rather a very joyous occasion. It was a fun occasion. Our students are fantastic. Those who have three periods in wanted to came to watch the contest and went right back to class when that period was over. So, it's really based on the hard work of our athletic director, the support of faculty operation, and so I did want to look at that. Looking ahead, as I noted, 11th grade parent meeting is on November 1st, day of service on November 4th, and on November 8th, a high school chorus will travel to New York City for a performance of this.
Thank you. Any questions? Well, I have to say to all three of you, it's quite extraordinary to hear about the amazing marshaling of resources within our buildings and also in our community more broadly. And it's truly heartening to sort of hear these updates on what's happening in each of your buildings. Thank you for taking the time to compile it and share the information with us. Thank you. Okay. So, we have time now for some preliminary, I believe, short reports. I think the superintendent suggested these might be short reports on--
I always say that. Hope springs eternal.
Brief reports about our experiences at the NISBA conference. So, may I invite my colleagues to share some highlights of what we learned and experienced in Lake Placid?
Well, we started out going to the communications seminar, sort of pre-conference, which was quite remarkable. This was the small tome that we were handed. But it was really informative, ways to communicate with your community and managing community opposition, how to manage chaos online, all kinds of information about opening dialogue with your community, owning the story of your school district rather than letting other people own it for you. I thought it was fantastic. The speakers were really engaged in judging. It was a terrific session.
Super helpful. Diane?
Well, I actually did not get a chance to forward the slides from the presentations I went to. I did go to one on goal setting and also on engaging the community. So, there's a slide deck that I'll send. I did download it, but I didn't get a chance to forward it. But there, I think we all went to at least one or two really good presentations throughout the weekend. So, it was a good conference overall.
I'm just wondering if we're going to, are we going to talk about the meeting in detail, like, or just?
Well, so--
Station out, like, or pad them on?
Maybe we should think about perhaps creating an abstract, just a brief abstract, and being sure we share all the slides from the sessions we've been to, so that way we can kind of maximally optimize. But we did try to plan to go to different sessions and so we could bring back more information to the group.
A lot of sessions.
Yeah. So, would it be too soon, say for the next meeting, for us to sort of give the slide decks to Joe, to circulate, and think about preparing just a few remarks about the high points?
Yeah. Maybe just listen to what you went to and--
Yeah.
So, they can kind of see, everybody can kind of see what you went to.
Yeah, I think brief is the watchword there too. I'd also point out that a number of the sessions that we went to aligned pretty directly with a number of the board goals and/or a number of the committee goals, so I have a high level of confidence that many of the committees will be discussing the content of some of those workshops at their committee meetings, which ultimately gets reported out to the full board. So, I think that's another way that it'll kind of flow out to everybody else without, you know, planning to sit at a meeting like this for two hours and recount--
Summarize.
--all the things. In particular, I found that, first of all, for those of you who have not been to this before, there is really more board and school district-related professional development that you could actually go to. Typically, for every session, and there are quite a few over the course of two and a half days, were multiple sessions that you'd love to be in two places or three places at once, which is why we tried to kind of split them up so somebody was at everyone that we wanted to go to. And I don't think it was any surprise that, in my opinion, the ones that were most, the sessions that were most crowded, had to do with student social, emotional wellness and student mental health. There were a few of those that I actually couldn't get into because there were so many people, I mean, there were 700 and some odd people there at least, and they were jammed. And the other hot topic across the board, I think, was technology, in particular, social media, but technology more generally, and they were jam-packed. So, they're obviously issues that many other school districts and boards are also interested in and dealing with. That's why they're on the agenda in the first place, and that's why those are the ones you have to, you have to fight to get a seat because they're just, they're just jammed. So, we tried to cover the waterfront as best we could, and while we were covering the waterfront for a good chunk of Friday morning, Mark was serving as our delegate to the NISBA convention part of the act, you know, the event, and served us in that capacity, you and the community in that capacity as well. I want to overlook that piece of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd just say, if you're able to go next year, it's very inspiring to go, to hear all the great things that you could do, other districts are doing, you know, and it makes you, reinforces what we do here, it's really good. So, make sure you leave New York City, so it's a little bit easier to get to. So, I'd say you're able to go back.
Also, the commissioner speaks, right? Are we going to speak to that?
Yeah. So, the commissioner spoke. There is a pretty good article in the onboard that came in the mail yesterday that kind of summarizes what she had to say. I thought, you know, I liked what she said. It depends, remains to be seen on what actually happens, you know, going forward with teacher evaluations and testing and all the various topics that she talked about.
Is it, her speech is in the onboard?
Speech is not, but there's an article--
Article about--
--that summarizes what she had to say.
Actually, the whole onboard issue this time is--
Mine is drenched.
Oh.
It's drying.
Are you done with it?
It's a very good summary.
Yeah, I'd love to.
It is, it's a great.
I don't know if it's going to bounce back.
It kind of covers all the seminars and the keynote speakers, so it's definitely-- I appreciate, because we can't all be at everything, even if we're there, so it's a great summary. Okay, so we'll come back with our very boiled-down takeaway points from the sessions we want to share with everyone, but I do want to second what Joe's saying about it feeding back into our committee. We're, especially long-range planning, I think we really highlighted a lot of sessions that gave us some very concrete ideas, practices, that, you know, we can test against our own special circumstances.
And we got to look at the Forecast 5 tool, which is, I think it really, I thought it was a better tool than I thought it was going to be walking up to the display, so I think it's really worth the investment.
It's a much more robust program than we originally knew, so--
Very powerful.
They keep on improving it and getting it better and better.
And Tom, were you able to order both modules?
Yeah.
The whole enchilada.
The whole thing.
Yeah, I still haven't gotten the paperwork, but they're getting it all set up and ready for us.
Yeah, they're prorating it for us, so we'll, I think, what did I tell you? You say, told me, 80%, 60%? They did some kind of proration.
It turned out 812, so 75%.
Yeah.
Great.
Also, just while we're on that topic, I did send out an email with some information to all of you shortly after we got back from NISBA, because if we're going to make the commitment to get this, we want to get it ASAP, get it set up, start using it. So, I heard back from, from most board members, everybody I heard back from said, yeah, do it, go for it. So, we started the process already, also sent some information on it to Marvin Krebs, our Director of Curriculum Instruction, because there are a lot of things that I saw down there on the convention floor that I thought could be used for data analysis and display that didn't directly intersect with the finance piece, which was kind of what attracted us to this initially. So, I sent it to him. He emailed me back and said, seems like this could be very helpful, like on the, you know, on the instructional side and the program side of the shop. So, he wanted to learn more. I put him in touch with Mike and Scott, the guys we talked to up there at NISBA, and I told him, listen, I said, you don't have to give us your opinion, we're already ordering it. At the very least, we're going to order it for the financial gains, but we think it's got a lot of power for you to use in putting together program and data, so I think he'll find that there's a great deal of potential in there for him too. So, I think we'll, my sense is we'll get more than our money's worth out of that investment. So, we're moving there. They're getting a setup.
Excellent. Good. Okay, well then, let's move along to board committee reports. First, we have long-range planning.
That's me. So, this was our October 16 meeting. Tom and Joe provided us with several documents review. The first one that we got is a list of all the courses that the high school offers that go from 2009 to 2018, and then the students that selected their courses and broke them out by breaks, and you can see if they chose the right course. We went through that for quite a while, but we have a lot of questions, and also we'll prepare that for the actual enrollment of the board this year, seeing how that's been with students, Joe's, and then, you know, whether or not they can do that in those classes or help that in that context. We also got copies of the master schedule for both the middle school and high school. That, I don't think it's going to fly in here, but you get to look at that, it's a very interesting document, how it breaks down, for staff between buildings, so to write her in the works. Now, to do that, Joe provided us with the real estate market overview. We didn't actually have a chance to go through this, but it's by school district, so that it's going to be useful for our community, but we don't have a chance to go through that yet. And we talked about Forecast 5, I think that's already taken care of. So, the postcards, that meaning the postcard, the post office had said that we need to make a change, just where the address had a date, so Tom is going to change that, and then it was going to be sent out, I think--
I just got the card stock today, so we started printing, we got 800 printed right now, they should be out on Thursday.
Great.
Excuse me, did we have to make a change to--
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's all, yeah, that all had to get changed, and that was taken care of. Card stock came in late this afternoon, and got about 1,000 done this afternoon.
And then, once that goes out, about a week later, the surveys will go out. And then, we talked just a little bit about, we've mentioned this before, we're looking to put together kind of a base model, or, you know, what the district would look like, only mandated services. So, we talked a little bit about what that would look like, and because there are kind of some gray areas to that, for example, that would be high school language, four years are required, but what English classes are not necessarily required. Not requirement of APs, but you certainly could have that, that fit, it was an initial cost or say. So, we talked a little bit about how that, how would we present that, and we're going to talk more about that, but there's several areas that that music falls into my category, music, but obviously, dance or chorus, so it's not as cut and dry as, you know, estimated, and that's not--
Any questions for long-range planning? Okay. And let's move on to curriculum.
That's me. So, we got an update from Dr. Davenport on two new pilots, the SEAL by Literacy, which is a stamp that goes on your diploma if you apply for it, to indicate high level of proficiency in one or more languages in addition to English, and we're offering Spanish and French, and it will be available to this year's seniors if they wish to apply for it. The second pilot was for implementing a growth mindset feedback tool, developed at Stanford University by the PERTS project, and there is, there's a handout here, there's included in the book, what information about the SEAL by Literacy, as well as an overview of the Growth Mindset Project. So, both of those were exciting to hear about. And Marvin brought the new curricula for journalism and kinesiology and anatomy classes, which I believe are up for approval today. And he also shared six placemats, which are in here as well. They're, starts off with conferencing, 3.2, 3.1, excuse me, 4.3, 3.2, 3.3. I don't know why that was so hard to say. It's really hard to say. Clearly, I need to work on my reading, which these placemats might help you with. But the main idea of the placemats that Marvin was so proud of, the work that was done at CLS, it's, teams, K through 5, vertical teams at CLS, took this material from Fuentes and Penel's Balanced Literacy Program, and they pulled out what of it, which things from that program they wanted to implement at CLS. And they worked together to make these placemats to kind of boil down their takeaways, and that kind of work just wouldn't be possible, Joe was pointing out, that that kind of work wouldn't be possible in a bigger district, but we were really able to involve a lot of, a lot of staff in that project, and Marvin was very, very pleased with how it came out. And then, we briefly discussed, basically, that we're going to, at future meetings, talk about the new curriculum standards, NICE's new curriculum standards, and also to get an update on the school technology curriculum, how we are in our progress on K-12 technology integration. So, that's that.
Any questions? I think it probably just deserves to be stated again, that in particular, that last point is important, as it is one of our three goals for the year for the board, so thank you for keeping it front and center on our dashboard of things we're paying attention to. Okay. CDEP.
You want to do this, or you can take it?
Oh, you can take it.
Okay. So, for our new members, what you don't know is, this is my favorite meeting of all time.
We're very jealous, Laura.
I know.
It's fun at this--
The, because we had adopted the CDEP plan, it was, Tom was spent over the summer and earlier this fall in the implementation of the goals that have been laid out in that plan. So, in the September Superintendent's Conference Day, all the staff got back together to sort of pull out the goals that were specific to their area or their building and try to work up some common themes. There are hundreds and hundreds of goals that can't all be accomplished this year, but they, they're trying to chunk it out in manageable work. At Chancellor, they are looking at a new math program, that's sort of front and center, the most important thing for them right now, but they're also looking at connections, sort of interdisciplinary connections between ELA, social studies, and science. At BMS, they're going to be looking at realignment of the curriculum because of the new state standards, and they're also going to look very closely at tech inequities for kids, as access or doesn't, how we can work around that to provide access universally. At the high school, they're planning across all disciplines, and there, I think there are 40 goals that they outlined that they want to try to tackle this year. They're also looking at better supports for special ed kids who are particularly struggling with the new standards, how we can address their needs. And there was a pretty lively discussion, which was incredibly heartening, among--
And there was a pretty lively discussion, which was incredibly heartening, among the staff members there, about supporting each other in training for new standards. One of our high school science teachers in particular was very clear about wanting to help the elementary science, elementary general teachers with science-specific lessons. I thought that was really a lovely introduction to perhaps getting professional learning communities rolling in Reinbeck. So that teachers, teaching teachers is always really a beautiful thing. The Superintendent's Conference Day on Friday is a remarkable program, all based on social and emotional development, school climate, and behavioral work. Brett touched on it with the Anderson folks coming in, but teachers, actually, all staff are invited to choose three two-hour work sessions. They're going to be talking about confidentiality, which is mandated for every staff member, non-instructive, instruct, everybody. Classroom management, understanding the executive function, trauma, spectrum disorder, and mindfulness. So teachers can choose three of those topics and go to those sessions. Emily was disappointed, she wasn't able to get a session on anxiety, but she's going to work toward getting that incorporated as quickly as she can, as soon as she can in available time. So, and the other big news is that the school climate survey that's been sort of bubbling in the background is going to be administered between November 6th and 17th. We should have results on that sometime early December. And I think it's to be determined how the information is going to be disseminated and analyzed to the department, so it's a great meeting, really great.
That's great. Questions, comments? That's a great start. Thank you. Reinbeck Collaboration.
Sure. This will be brief, because the meeting itself is brief. So brief that by the time Mark got there, after getting held up at work, we were done. This was the rescheduled meeting from several weeks ago that got canceled and rescheduled because of a meeting that kind of exec had held in Poughkeepsie and had summoned our village mayor and town supervisor there. Unfortunately, our town supervisor was only able to stay for about 20 minutes. She had a conflict that afternoon, but we did meet for about 20 minutes. We spent most of our time hearing from Mayor Bassett about some of the involvement of our students in community service, assisting specifically the village of Reinbeck. There are a group of students who are working with the village staff on a records retention project, I mean, a lot of filing and such, but still work that's labor-intensive and that is too much for the current village staff to do. So a number of our students are assisting with that, this record retention project, and they're also working on, I don't think it's started yet, but they're working on developing the contours of a project involving our journalism class. That seems to be the hot program this year, and rightly so. They're working on getting the journalism class to help the village put together a newsletter, and part of that work will involve them, you know, some of the students from the class, interviewing members of the various departments in the village, you know, the highway department, the water department, and finding out what they do. They're finding, at least the mayor is finding, that a lot of people in the village don't really have a full understanding as to what some of the departments do on a daily basis serving the village residents. So his idea was to put together some kind of newsletter to distribute to the village residents, to let them know what they're getting for their village tax dollars, and thought it'd be a great idea to have our journalism class participate in that. So, and he was just very excited, I had to strap him down to the chair. He was all over the place with that, very excited about it, as was I. And I think it's great that we're able to engage some of our kids in some real-world experiences.
Experiences.
So that was, that was the big buzz. The town, excuse me, the village, has submitted an ADA, a Dutchess County Block Grant proposal for an ADA crosswalk at the intersection of East Market Street and, it's the one that comes across there, where the deli used to be.
Parsonage.
Parsonage, thank you, which would involve handicapped accessible crosswalk with, you know, the lights that blink and whatnot. So that would be good for our students, too, because quite a few of them who walk to school, high school kids, who are within the one-mile limit, walk past there, and that's a pretty big, busy street in the village for our kids to have to cross, so that even though they're not, by and large, they don't need the ADA compliance part of that, it will still provide a safer crosswalk for them, too. So I thought that was good, hopefully that they, hopefully they will, they will get that grant, and that's, that's about it, in 20 minutes.
Questions?
Yeah, Mark? Not really a question, just incredible gratitude to Mayor Bassett for dreaming up ways that our kids can get into the community and, you know, help out the village. It's really fantastic.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, it's a win-win. And also, I mean, the idea that we may have a real safe crossing there is wonderful. When I first came on board, I remember receiving communications and people asking, can't the school do something with the, with the village to make that something happen there? So it's very nice to see a proposal, at least, to make that safer. Okay. Communications.
All right, those are mine. We spent the bulk of our meeting talking about the communications seminar that we went to at NISBA about ways we can be responsive to our community, while being responsible to the school's mission, vision, and core values.
Where'd you get those key words?
Right out of this. I committed to all I dreamed of. I committed to memory.
That's the mantra, responsible and responsive, right?
That's right. That's exactly right. As I reported earlier, managing chaos on social media, communicating with staff in the larger community when there are issues that arise, you know, even issues of, you know, fire in a building, you know, getting the word out so that people are not spinning wild stories. One of the funny examples in this was a kid, you know, sticking himself with a knife in shop class by accident, he went to the nurse, got a Band-Aid, but by the time 20 minutes had passed, there was a stabbing in the school. So just managing that kind of crazy stuff. So, and then, of course, managing our online identity and how we can do that. That was a really interesting session, three of us went to that, you know, just ways you can search the name of the school and all the things that you can find about your school. So, which led into a really lengthy conversation about social media and Reinbeck's use of social media. The consensus opinion is that we need to have more, a stronger presence on social media, but we're mindful that there are not enough, you know, people in a communications department in Reinbeck, which we don't have. So, you know, there are lots of questions about how do we own our message, how do we monitor online chatter, who's responsible for doing the work, but how do we promote this district as the voice of authority about this district? So Steve Johnson is going to reach out to some of his colleagues at BOSI's, and hopefully we can set up some sort of consultative session about, you know, setting it up, making it useful, because once we dive in, as Joe pointed out, we're in, so we have to do it effectively. We can't let it fall down.
If I could just take on to that, we basically tasked Steve Jensen with looking out there and bringing us back a number of options, so we can see what the options are and can make some decisions as to what we can manage with the current levels of staffing and resources that we have. So he's, he's on the hunt, so stay tuned, we'll, we'll be doing something differently, but exactly what that'll look like remains to be determined.
And then, briefly, at the end of our meeting, we talked about our coffees with the board for the year. We would like to pick a time in November, it'll be after the Long Range Planning first survey, questions gone out, so we'd like the topic to be focused on that. Midwinter, we'd like to host another one on social and emotional well-being, which ties into the climate survey that will have just been completed. And then, in the spring, we'll have one, hopefully, about the budget discussions from that. So we can try to pick some times for at least the November one, it'd be great.
Diane.
So, no surprise with social media, I'm 100% agree with the committee, we definitely need to try to find a way to work that in somehow. I mean, it was interesting, it's been two years since I was at the conference, and two years ago, there was a few, few sessions about social media, it was kind of like, legally, what can you do? And it was, you know, very dipping your toes in, and two years later, it was kind of just like, it's here, this is what you should be doing, you should be doing it, you know, that was kind of the message that I took between the two. So, you know, I hope that we're able to find a way to make that happen, step away from how people are getting into this, looking for their, their issues, and sort of trying to figure out a way to.
Good. Thank you. Do we have anything to share now from personnel now?
Well, some of what we had to share, would have to be shared in executive session, but we did, we did start to look at, without minutes to share, we did start to look at draft, or several drafts of an organizational chart that Tom has started to put together, which was really an outgrowth of a request by the Long Range Planning Committee, so we can get a better handle on our staffing district-wise, as well as building by building, by building, and Tom was essentially presenting that to us and getting our feedback about kind of how we wanted it to look, what he should add, what he shouldn't add, should we color code this, et cetera. So it was, it was really more like a work session to give him some feedback on that as much as anything else. So thank you for your work on that, Tom, to date, and the input from the building principals feeding into that project. And then, then we entered negotiation session with our Teachers Association, and that's something we can brief you on, or we should brief you on in executive session.
Just one quick add-on I thought about in the middle of the night. Tom, when we were at NISBA and getting sort of the brief demo about Forecast Five, there is a whole section about staffing, and all the information is pulled from beds data, so that might be really helpful when you get together with Mike, you know, rather than reinventing the wheel, which might be your sort of painstakingly doing, it might just dump.
Yeah, I don't know what that's got, because I saw in some of the, like, the, looking at little things, like, oh, it does have some information there about the personnel, and so I'll take a look at it when it comes in, and for that matter.
Yeah. We could ask Mike about how to use it.
It might save a lot of hours.
A lot of time, yeah. We're thinking your life is going to get so much better.
Like, your enthusiasm.
We can dream.
Now, you've got to remember, one of the things, this is going to be data from last year.
Right, yeah, right.
It is not the current year data, so it will be a reflection of last year. And I don't know when this year's beds data will actually be updated, well, that's something I'll talk to Mike and Scott about.
My guess is not till the spring.
Yeah, but my, it's my thinking, you know, it goes through a bunch of revisions, and, you know, it's, I'm not even sure if anybody's put in any information about beds yet.
But we haven't, because we don't have to yet.
I know.
I mean, it's, the process just started.
It's just starting, right.
It'll be a while.
Yeah, we don't, it's going to be good. It's going to be good. It's going to be good. Okay, so let us move on to good news. There's so much good news happening. Where do we begin?
We heard a bunch of it tonight.
We did hear a lot of excellent news. Yes, Diane? You can tell us some good news.
Both our girls and boys soccer team are going into the sectional finals this week. I'm excited, the girls are having a great season, and both teams went to the halls finals, which unfortunately went to our neighbors, but it's actual finals this week, so.
And I should share with all of you, the Hudson Valley News Network did a TV spot in that Red Hook game, there is a wonderful highlight of the Reinbeck goal that was shot from 30 feet out, and a, an interview with, with the athlete that shot it, so it's pretty cool. I'll send it to all.
Send the link, please.
I will. It's really pretty cool.
Other good news? Yes?
Just to amplify how great Madagascar Day was, I was able to go to the luncheon afterward, and the ambassadors were there, they put together this great movie of their trip, it was really fantastic, all the, sorry, I know, folks were there, and they talked about, you know, the things that were hard, the things that they learned. Three out of the five of them came back completely changing their life plan because of what they had seen and experienced there, and I think it was really a remarkable time for them. You know, kudos to Henry and Deirdre for chaperoning that trip, and it was really life-changing, I believe.
One amazing thing, by the way, that's planned, is that so much sharing goes on across the grades, between the older students and the younger students, and that's a perfect example of that.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, since you brought up Deirdre's name, that a former board member, Deirdre Burns, was honored before a crowd of 720, sometimes raucous members of.
That medicine valley, I tell you.
Yeah, they're a little crazy, but it was great. She was honored for board service at the Hudson School Study Council's annual Awards of Excellence Dinner last week, and a number of board members and our administrators were there to support Deirdre, so I think that's, that's good news.
Very good news. Other good news? I've got two things. One is that the breakfast of the board was actually really wonderful and productive, and it's always so heartening to get to spend time with our teachers and, in the buildings, and just hear about how the school year is off to a great start, so that was wonderful, very productive. And if no one else is going to say it, this isn't Discovery Day coming up this weekend, so it's a little preemptive, good news, but marking the 10th anniversary of the founding of the Reinbeck Science Foundation, all the tremendous work, some of which we'll be, you know, voting on this evening, that it's this group of people, dedicated people, it's done in our community for our schools, so that's very good news. Okay. Old business.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up a reminder that I believe the Audit Committee is planning on meeting sometime next week. We are required to submit our corrective action plan to the Office of the State Comptroller by November 30th, correct? Which is within the 90-day requirement, and we want the Audit Committee to have some very meaningful input into that process, for obvious reasons, and then the implementation of that corrective action plan must occur by the start of the coming school year, September 2018. So corrective action plan first, this is what we need to do based on the audit report, and then we have essentially the rest of the year to begin to implement that corrective action plan, and if things run true to form, they'll be back in another seven-plus years to audit us again, and that, I don't make this stuff up, folks. And at that point in time, they will assess whether we did what we were supposed to do seven years earlier.
Okay.
Then choose something else to audit.
Yes, yes.
They always go back to make sure you've implemented, you know, corrected those issues that they've noted, and then they select another, or they, or they will do it again, if they see it wasn't done.
Or there's still issues with it, they may go back at it.
They may go back at it. You never know.
Something else will be the, the cause desur in seven years.
They want to rewrite the activities guide, so. They want to rewrite the extracurricular activities guide, so it's only 50 years.
So we're, I believe, we're zeroing in on a date for next week.
Yes, we're looking next Friday, it's just a matter of then when, because you can only do the afternoon, right?
Anytime after 12:00, basically.
Yeah, but be the afternoon.
Okay, so I just bring that up under old business to let everybody know that it's in, it's in the works, and I have every confidence that we will meet the deadline for submitting the corrective action plan before the end of November.
Okay. All right.
Also on old business, we talked last time about a potential curriculum workshop for the full board to talk about, you know, what we want to look at, what we need to look at, we need to figure out sort of a format for that. Do we want Marvin to come? I suppose getting dates on the calendar would be helpful. And also, as we talked about, cops with the board, getting a November date for them.
So that's a date. As long as we're talking about dates, we also need to provide annual sexual harassment training to members of our board, as we also do with members of our instructional and non-instructional staffs. That's baked into board policy, so we need to set a date to do that. My suggestion is always that we do it before a board meeting, so you're not coming up specifically for that purpose. And in years past, we've scheduled it before a board meeting, had a light supper, start at 6 o'clock, Marvin's usually done by 7:15 or so, and then we come down here and have our board meeting. So you all know when the three board meetings are between now and the holidays, and I would suggest that we either do it on November 14th, or November 28th, or December 14th.
14th.
12th, okay, so you don't have to give me the dates now.
No?
No, I mean, you can give them to me before we leave, but.
They're all fine for me.
Yeah, block off those days.
Wait, how can that even be? You're going to get yourself.
That is impossible.
It's November.
Impossible. Let's talk about the Bermuda Triangle or something like that in the same breath.
Now, not to be, this sexual harassment is in regards to us, or is it like the culture of the school?
Yes. You have certain obligations as board members to know what's going on in your school district in terms of sexual harassment, how your, what your responsibilities are to deal with it. And again, it's baked into our board policy that there will be training for every employee, and in certain ways, even though you're not paid, your employees of a sort, so you need to be.
And does it address students?
Yeah.
Like what we're to do when we hear about things?
Students, students, teachers, student to student, student to teacher, teacher to student.
Okay. Sounds like the first date is a front-runner now.
Well, 14, I'll have to confirm that with Marvin, of course.
See if Marvin's available. Does that work for you, Steve?
14?
Yes. And even before the training, if anything of that sort comes to your attention, you should be reporting it to me, or Marvin, or somebody in the administrative team. That's not something to allow to know about and to let go. That's one of the things that will be part of the training, is that there's responsibility, just like there is on the part of a teacher or teacher aide, or anybody, that if, you know, it's like, if you see something, say something, or if you hear something, say something, so it can be investigated and a determination can be made whether there's anything to it or not. There may very well be nothing to it, although there may very well be a basis for an investigation and a course of action. So again, just generally speaking, don't ever not bring that to my attention or Tom's attention, unless it's me or Tom who are guilty, then you bring it to somebody else's attention. But there are people here who know how to funnel it to the right place to get it investigated, so that's.
Could we do that the 28th instead?
You can do it, whatever date all of you are ready. If the 28th works better for you and Marvin's available, then that's, that's what we'll do it. I'll confirm with you once I confirm with Marvin.
It's early this year.
It's the Thursday before then.
This is.
This is after Thanksgiving, yes. It's the Tuesday after Thanksgiving.
Okay. Any other?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Old business?
Not on.
Public comment? Okay, then I think we are prepared to move on to our action items.
Dokey.
All right. Is there anyone who would like to remove any item from the consent agenda? So, may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the consent agenda?
So.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous? That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the voluntary resignation of Whitney Drucker from her position as Personnel Assistant, conditional upon her subsequent appointment to the Civil Service Position of Secretary to the Superintendent of Schools, effective October 19th, 2017, at an annual salary of $45,000, prorated for the 26-week probationary period.
So.
Second. Any discussion?
Congratulations.
Very happy.
I haven't run rough yet. Stewie did a great job.
All those in favor? Awesome. That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Whitney Drucker, Secretary to the Superintendent, as Records Management Officer for the balance of the 2017-18 school year at.
It's Records Access Officer.
Oh, then our.
Records Access Officer.
Yep, my bad.
I'm the Records Management Officer.
You don't want to get that up.
Don't take his job. Records Access Officer for the balance of the 2017-18 school year at no additional salary.
Somebody else sit in your chair tomorrow.
Second.
Should be someone.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve additional coaches, advisors for the 2016-17 school year.
That should be 17-18, I'm sorry.
17-18 school year, in accordance with the 20.
That's 16-17.
16-17 RTA salary schedule. Boys swimming varsity, cabin stores, $4,532. Boys basketball JV, Tim Pachone.
Pachone.
Pachone, $3,136.
So.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the appointment of additional enrichment program advisors for Chancellor Livingston Elementary School for the 2017-18 school year, see attached.
So.
Second. Any discussion? All those, yeah, fix the typo, we'll take out the nine.
That was the one I was looking for before.
Thank you.
Roll agenda.
All those in favor? That is unanimous, that motion passes.
Just for the record, I want to let everybody know that any typos on the board minutes are Whitney's fault. No, just the opposite. They are all my fault. I own every single one. There's only so much that two fingers can do.
So if you use all 10, you make more?
Yeah, pretty much.
All right. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and substitute non-instructional staff for the 2017-18 school year.
So.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the following grant awards from the Reinbeck Parent Teacher Student Organization, PTSO, in the total amount of $2,902. Please note that, $2,902, as follows. High school newspaper printing, submitted by Ernie Welch, in the amount of $600 as stipulated. High school poetry out loud, submitted by Sarah Wheeler, in the amount of $100 as stipulated. Grade III teamwork counts, submitted by Sarah Seafarth, in the amount of $500 as stipulated. CLS Principals Fund and Backpack Program, submitted by Brett King, in the amount of $800 as stipulated. And BMS Grade VII Math Study Aides, as submitted by Alyssa Barnes, in the amount of $225 as stipulated. Fifth Grade How Caverns Field Trip, as submitted by Brenda Palmeteer, in the amount of $677 as stipulated.
So.
Second. Any discussion?
I apologize, I forgot to ask this ahead of time. Why was it that Brenda Palmeteer, was it something from last year, or was it that she lined it up for next year, since she's now in sixth grade?
I think it said that it was backlog.
Backlog.
Okay, yeah, I saw the letter, but I guess I wasn't sure. Okay, I just wanted to double check.
Good question, thank you.
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And did we already cover what the Principals Fund and Backpack Program was?
And nobody has asked about it.
Oh, what is that?
Well, the backpack, the Principals Fund is, I'm assuming, an amount of money, I think it's, I'm trying to think of what the breakdown was, might be, it might be in the documentation here. Part of that is the Principals Fund, and part of it is the Backpack Program.
It's 500 for the Principals Fund, 300 for the Backpack Program.
Okay, so the Principals Fund, I assume, is a discretionary fund to use for various and some very small items that may come up. The Backpack Program is a program that they've been running over at Chancellor Livingston for maybe the last.
It's only been a year.
Is it only a year?
It's only a year, just started up last year.
So this is the second year.
This is the second year of it.
And it's a program that a lot, that a number, quite a number of schools have, and they essentially put together a backpack with food items that go to children whose families need the support, and they try to do it, you know, discreetly, and they get a backpack at the end of the day on Friday, and they take it on the bus with them and bring it home, and that feeds some people in their household for however long. Obviously, it can't be a humongously big backpack, and those kids wouldn't be able to lift it, but they do get food items, and part of it is paid through various grants and donations from the chancellor's staff, and in this case, donations from the PTSO, various places, they kind of cobble it together and run that program. So they're running for the second year this year.
Great question, thank you. Any other discussion? Thank you very much to the PTSO for funding such a wide range of wonderful opportunities for our students. All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the grant awarded from the Community Foundations of the Hudson Valley in support of funding for the BMS 8th Grade Franklin D Roosevelt Library and Museum Trip, submitted by Dietrich Cake, in the amount of $1,000 as stipulated.
So.
Second. Any discussion? We're hearing a lot about the FDR, you know, archive and museum and resources in our area. This is a wonderful initiative. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the grant award from the Reinbeck Science Foundation, RSF, in support of funding for the 5th Grade Norwalk Aquarium Trip, submitted by Chantal Collins, in the amount of $4,626 as stipulated.
So.
Second. Any discussion? It's a wonderful tradition, it's very exciting, the students are going to get to go see the aquarium yet again. All those in favor? Thank you to RSF. That is unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve a leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Karen Signer, to commence on or about September 28th, 2017, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability, as certified by a physician in writing, to the extent of her accrued sick leave through December 3rd, 2017, or thereabouts.
So.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve curricula for high school courses, course, oh, courses, in anatomy and kinesiology and in journalism?
So.
Second. Any discussion?
I would just like to point out, the anatomy and kinesiology curriculum was completely written solo. Most of our curricula is developed with many teachers and lots of hands. This was put together by the teacher, and it's really a remarkable curriculum, if you haven't had a chance to read that.
It's wonderful to get a chance to review that, all of us. All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the revised 2017-18 school tax bills totaling $2,010.01 in reduction adjustments, and to make the appropriate refund funds to the property owner if required, see attached.
So.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous, that motion passes. May I note that the next motion is Motion 6.13. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to adopt the budget development calendar and timelines for 2018-19 budget?
So.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, yes.
I do.
Please discuss.
Yeah, I just want to bring this up. Mark emailed me today, and I'm not sure whether he copied all of you or not, with a question about scheduling the budget workshop on a different date. Currently, we have on the calendar from March 10th, and his suggestion was to do it later. Unfortunately, the latest we can do it is moving it back a week to March 17th, because after that is the Saturday that butts up against spring break, and I'd be concerned about the attendance there. The following Saturday is Passover. I don't think we should do it on Passover, I mean, more than we should do it on Christmas Day or Easter. And then the following week, we're butting right up against having to adopt the budget, so I'm not sure if Tom has given that any thought, but really, the only alternative would be, the only later alternative would be March 17th.
And that is St. Patrick's Day, correct?
That's St. Patrick's.
Yeah.
Well, I have no problem, I mean, just, I'm just thinking about attendance. Would it be better attended or less attended? I don't know.
I would be worried.
I couldn't care less, one way or the other.
Because you're not Irish, I know.
I am, I am, but I'm not going to do anything until I'm done with.
Well, I would be more concerned.
I don't drink during the day.
I would be more concerned about, I would be more concerned about an event like that the day after St. Patrick's Day than I would the morning of St. Patrick's Day, but I'll let you guys be the judge.
Mark, I think, Mark has something.
Well, I, when I wrote the email earlier, I wasn't thinking about in terms of the spring break being later in the month, so I don't really care either way, it doesn't matter to me.
We're not going to have more information from this date to make a difference in what we're proposing.
April 1st is magic.
Probably not.
So I just wanted to bring, you know, what made the suggestion, just wanted to float it out there, we can certainly stay with March 10th, and you know what? If we get into the budget development process and we decide at some point, a month or two down the road, hey, we could benefit by having it a week later, we could change it. I mean, it's, we have to set a calendar to start working off, but it's not unchangeable, so we can stick with what we have then, and we'll see how it works out. Okay?
Okay. Are we ready to take action on this? Yeah? All those in favor? Yeah? That's unanimous, that motion passes. And the next item is Item 6.14, please note. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve a leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Daria Berry, to commence on or about September 18th, 2017, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability, as certified by a physician in writing, to the extent of her accrued sick leave through November 8th, 2017, or thereabouts.
So.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing.